Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. Uh, let's start with the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation. Dr. Rick Janelle, Lead Teaching Minister at Bellevue Church of Christ is here from twenty-three eleven Madison Street.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our God, we're grateful for the, uh, the nation we live in. We thank you for our community. We thank you for, uh, the ways that you blessed our lives. We thank you, Father, for the, uh, the, the, the people who, 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 who lead us, who have encouraged us and helped us in our lives. Thank you for the teachers and mentors that we've each had. Father, I thank you for the first responders and for the people in, in our community that, uh, work many times under trying circumstances to, uh, to make our place a better place. We ask your blessing on all those who put on a uniform of any kind, whether it's military or, uh, for the city or in the medical profession. We ask, Father, that you would, uh, bless the leaders of the world. We pray that, uh, if it possible, that peace would come. And if, if not, that you would, uh, would bless us with inner peace and inner calmness, that we might, uh, treat each other the way we should. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Janelle. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be run in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agi- of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a move. Shouldn't we approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to move item sixteen I to right after item fifteen B.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns to amend the agenda by moving sixteen I to right after item six, fifteen B. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I have a motion by Cook, seconded by Burns to approve the agenda as amended now. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to item seven, special presentation, seven A. Presentation on the two thousand and twenty-two annual report with Groserpi. And we have Jim Janicki on the agenda, but it looks like Mike Rook is here. Uh, he's the new director and welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you and thank you, City Council. Uh, first of all, Mike Rook's the new executive director of Groserpi. Um, this is week number three, so still drinking from the fire hose a little bit. Um, I just had a great tour of the city of Bellevue today from Mark. Thank you for that, Mark. I really appreciate it. Um, I know you have all the reports in front of you. I typically do not regurgitate all the numbers. If you like me to, I can, but I just want to give you a little bit of background of, of myself and going forward, what we kind of, what Groserpi wants to do. Um, I will give some higher level stuff here real quick, but, uh, last year there was actually ten open, well, overall, we landed four projects in Sarpy County. Uh, Project Thunder, which was a transportation tech startup, uh, was a hundred thousand capital investment, five new jobs. The Google expansion, which was, uh, two hundred and fifty million capex. The metal expansion, uh, in Springfield, which was a two hundred and twenty, uh, million capa- capex with a hundred new jobs. And then Pavilion Foods, expansion phase two, uh, which was a hundred million capex with two hundred jobs. So overall, they land, landed, uh, Groserpi landed, uh, four jobs last year with a total capital investment of six hundred and eighteen million in capital expenditures and three hundred and five jobs. Um, actually, in Bellevue, we opened ten projects last year. Uh, we had eight manufacturing, one other, one warehouse. Uh, and the site, we actually submitted ten sites, submitted them seventeen times to eleven different projects. Um, unfortunately, we didn't land any of those. I will, I can't tell you exactly why at the moment, but, um, going forward, I can definitely do that. Um, from here on out. We had one site visit, Project SSP, which was a new-to-market in, uh, December of last year. That is still open, so, uh, we're still in the running for that one. Since I've been here, we have actually had two new projects. I have re, uh, sent in RFPs to, and we've had one site visit already in the last three weeks. Um, at the PCS site for, uh, uh, Project Orange. So that was a really good one down there. Um, we'll see what happens. But really what I wanted to talk about is going forward, um, I, I'm not just going to be chasing the larger, big, sticky industries. Um, that's something I believe Groserpi has done in the past, uh, throughout Sarpy County, which those projects are great. Don't get me wrong. I will, if we get RFPs, we'll go after those. But I'm also going to be looking at the middle-of-the-road industry, commercial and retail. Um, I have a lot of retail in my background. Uh, worked fifteen years in it, um, so I have a passion for that still. So it's not just going to be looking at the bigger things. It's going to be looking at the smaller sites, anywhere from, you know, half acre to fifteen acres and then on up. Uh, the sites that I was shown today with Mark, I was very excited. You have some great big sites. And you've got some small ones and some infield that I think we can do a lot of things with. Um, and especially with, with that retail. When I say retail, that could be hotel, that could be grocery, that could be just any kind of retail. But those are some things we're definitely going to be looking at in the future, um, office. Um, also workforce. Workforce is key. Uh, workforce is going to be big all over in Sarpy County. Um, so how do we get our workforce here? Is that transportation? And then also housing. Is that workforce housing? Is that the missing middle housing? Those are all things we are going to be really focusing on and, uh, doing a lot of things with. And then finally, besides for just doing quarterly reporting, um, I want to meet with each and every one of you to see what your guys' pain points are and to see how Groserpi can definitely help out the city of Bellevue. So you'll be seeing definitely more emails from me and my project manager, Amanda. Um, but I, I want to be more visible and definitely help out more throughout Sarpy. All five communities, six communities, if you count, uh, the county as well, totally different. Not everyone's looking for the same thing, and I understand that. So, um, I will be doing a little thing, a couple of things different than what has been passed, but, you know, I'm really excited. Um, I've met so far with three out of the, the five communities and the county I've met with as well. Um, it's, it's going to be fun. There's going to be some really good things going on there. With that, um, if you like, we can go through the report, but I, I don't like regurgitating numbers that I wasn't a part of. I apologize for that. Um, but I would love to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Um, Mike, thanks for coming. Uh, we had a great meeting the other day. Uh, looking forward to working with you.
Yes.
And, uh, we had a lot going on and, uh, you can help us definitely, so. Do you have any questions for Mike? Councilwoman Welch.
I just wanted to say welcome, Mike. Mike and I work together, um, in the real estate world. And, uh, he reached out to me and immediately when he got the job, we just haven't been able to coordinate our schedules to get together. So I'm really looking forward to him getting involved in our community and helping us grow big. Welcome.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Look forward to some great information coming.
Yes.
All right. Item eight, organizational matters, eight C, approve appointment of Amy Battalion as the city attorney. So I'm going to have Amy step up just so you can meet her real quick. I think you've all kind of met her, but I want to put a face to the name. So the public can see you. You're on.
Good evening. Happy to be here.
We're, uh, we're excited to have somebody that, uh, is it, has the experience that Amy has. Um, she has the relationships already. Uh, she's done some past, uh, workforce in Bellevue, um, in the past. And also the Bellevue Public Schools and a lot of experience in the different courts, so, um, we're very happy to have you on board and, if you, Councilman Cook. Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Amy Battalion as our city attorney.
And I'll happily second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd just like to make a comment. First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you, but I want to pre, I want to thank our administration, Mayor Hyack and City Administrator Jim Resto and Ashley Decker. They arranged meetings to where we could sit down and meet with you. So I hope all council members were able to, you know, at least sit down and talk to you, if not, maybe call you or talk to you some other place. Because I think it, uh, makes a lot of difference where we can sit down with you and ask you questions and get your input and your ideas and, and stuff like that. And that, I thought it meant a lot to me to have that opportunity to sit down with you before we are here tonight. So I want to thank our administration and thank you and welcome.
And I appreciate all the council members taking the time to meet with me either, either on the phone or in person, um, or through previous relationships that we've had and look forward to serving the city.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to approve the appointment of Amy Battalion. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So you will start the twentieth of March, correct?
March twentieth.
So we'll see you at the next meeting as well, so. All right. Thanks for coming up. Okay, item nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses. We did not receive any applications. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four one one five, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of one parcel of city property to Jeffrey Nazek and to authorize the mayor to sign. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one five, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of one parcel of city property to Jeffrey Nazek and authorize the mayor to sign.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance four one one five.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four one one six, request to rezone lots one and two, Compass Hill, being a replat of tax lot eight A located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from A G to R D sixty for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County, general location, eight twenty West Avery Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one six, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about eight twenty West Avery Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four one one six.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, um, with Tammy. They're just asking for this rezoning, but there's been nothing planned outside of that, and it still will need to become, come before council before any development can be done. Is that correct?
Correct. This small subdivision plat is to facilitate a land transfer between the current owner and Habitat for Humanity, but at such time Habitat wishes to develop. Then yes, they would come forward with a preliminary plat and a rezoning, and we would do the public hearing process at that time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Eleven B one, request to small subdivision plat, lots one and two, Compass Hill. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item eleven B one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing. Second reading, we have none this evening. Thirteen, ordinances for introduction. First reading, we have none this evening. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. There are none this evening. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two three dash zero six. Approve the proposed first amendment to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget for the Sarpy County Wastewater Agency and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two three dash zero seven. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution number two zero two three dash zero seven to provide that the Sarpy County Election Commissioner shall be responsible for verification of voters. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two oh two three dash oh seven.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and we're going to go to sixteen, current business sixteen I. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for verification of voters between the city of Bellevue and Sarpy County Election Commissioner. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Comments or questions? Councilman Burns.
Yeah, I just have one question on the, uh, just in particular with the, so is it to be determined the cost of what it's going to take? I guess I'm a little confused on that. That's, I did want to ask that.
Yeah, and speaking with the election commissioner, they didn't have an exact amount that they can estimate. Um, the agreement tries to specify, specify as much as possible how they will be, um, calculating the cost. They have to submit an itemized statement to the city before we pay per the agreement. Um, but the election commissioner was hesitant to, to land on a distinct number.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Back to sixteen A, update from Mike Christiansen, chief building inspector, on the progress of bringing the dwelling at sixteen oh seven Franklin Street and at sixteen eleven Franklin Street back into habitable code compliance.
Good evening, everyone. This is update on sixteen eleven and sixteen oh seven. Um, first up, picture is sixteen eleven. Uh, thus far, he's repaired the stairs and the railing on the front of the building. Um, there hasn't been any inspections called for any of the work that's been done yet. Um, further off in the distance there, you can see the stairs on the secondary building, that's sixteen oh seven. And it appears that all work is going to cease on sixteen oh seven as they have decided to put that property up for sale. I'll just move on with the progress that's, uh, on sixteen eleven because that's where all the effort's going to be co- concentrated.
Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mike, um, sixteen oh seven is going up for sale? Is that correct?
My understanding is they're taking bids, yes.
Okay, and does that person have to meet with you, get the?
The red tags go with the property, yes.
Okay, perfect. So they need to bring it up to code? Do they have a certain timeframe?
Yeah, that'll be determined, you know, if, if he goes through with the sale and whoever the new owner is. But the red tag stays with the, the property that has to be repaired.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Go on to the next. This is the rear of sixteen oh seven. Um, the deck, on the rear entrance, entrances upstairs, and the stairs have been in place. Again, there's, hasn't been any inspections, uh, requested on those. If you can look to the left of the picture, there's the garage that was leaning. We've come into an agreement that that's not repairable. He's going to be removing that. He applied for a demolition permit today for that particular structure.
That's sixteen, sixteen eleven, isn't it?
Uh, sixteen eleven, excuse me, yes. Um, the other additional garage that was there had foundation damage. They are going to repair that. Um, this is all within that timeframe that was committed at the, uh, council meeting at the beginning, thirty, or thirty days ago.
Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I, I know that we put a lot of responsibility on you at the last reading to meet with him, to walk him through, to take care of all this. How many hours do you think you've spent with him, just meeting with him, walking through the code, verifying that everything is, is going the way it's supposed to? On top of the job you already have.
Well, after the, the fact that it came up for sale, probably I pushed in ten hours with, uh, some code research for him, uh, some meeting onsite and then meeting with some potential buyers as to going over the sixteen oh seven property of what needed to be done to that property.
Okay.
Any more?
That's as far as we've gotten so far on, um.
So is there anything on the inside of the red?
I have been on the inside. It's, it's habitable. It's, it's dated. I don't have any pictures of the inside. This is the siding on the sixteen eleven building on the south side. He's been replacing some of the siding there. The inside of the property is habitable. Like I said, it's just dated, but there isn't any code for long brown shag carpet, so.
So are you, uh, I mean, it looks like there is progress.
On the exterior, he's been, you know, proceeding, uh, tried to show the much, most progress that he's shown, uh, with repairing the siding, the stairs and the landings so far. Like I said, we've got a garage to, to repair and one to remove and to bring the outside into total compliance, you know, the states that the outside should be kept in a reasonably good state of repair. That's going to be, you know, entire paint job and coating of, of the exterior after all the repairs have been made.
Next thirty days will be pretty telling, hopefully.
It should be, yes.
Sorry for another question. Um, the one that he's, has up for bids, is that the one that's never been hap- happened? And this, this one here is the one that has had people living in it previously, but not for some period of time?
Yes.
Okay. And it's probably a little easier to get it up to speed than the other one?
Uh, I believe that's why he chose this one to concentrate all his effort on, yes.
And how much time did we give him on this one on sixteen eleven, do you remember?
End of March, I believe.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I thought, I thought it was May fourth.
There was ninety, it was, I thought it was ninety days with a, it's report back every thirty.
Right, and I think that took it to May fourth, right?
Was it a report every thirty days then?
Yeah.
With completion of, okay.
Oh, couldn't have been May fourth.
I thought there was a tight, tight timeframe, and then there was a longer timeframe when we did this. I'll, I'll just go back through the, the record and look at it, so.
Sixteen oh seven was given till the first of August for its completion, and there was a sooner date for sixteen eleven or the exterior.
That's probably where I caught that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, on the one that's up for sale, what, what do you think would be reasonable with a new buyer if he comes to you tomorrow or in a month from now to, what, what do you think you'd give him as, in the sense of it's got to be done by this date?
Again, I think the initial date that we stuck to, the first of August.
Okay.
What's needed is, you know, you need some crews in here to complete the work. You can't just go at it with one person.
Okay, so.
And expect to get it, you know.
Stick with those dates.
A, a six-month timeframe, you know, would be the max.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Item sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to agreement dated March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two with the Nebraska Humane Society for Animal Control Services. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here from the Humane Society tonight? Seeing none? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Please vote.
I'm going to have Shirley do the vote here, maybe. My machine just locked up on me. Surely it might be coming. Okay, I've got it. Paul, you've made the motion?
Yes.
And the second was?
McCaw.
McCaw. Thank you. It should be coming now. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract renewal with UKG Inc. For the payroll and HRIS software contract renewal for the term of April third, two thousand twenty-three through April second, two thousand twenty-six, in an amount not to exceed thirty-six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions?
Mayor, I just wanted as a point of clarification to let you guys know that this is a contract extension from our original contract. The actual budgeted amount that has already been approved is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the thirty-six hundred would be the increase on the services on top of that. I thought the cover sheet probably looked a little bit lacking on that part of it, so I just want to let you know that the approval is to extend that relationship. The current amount that we've already had budgeted, the thirty-six hundred is on top of that.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on that? Okay, motion by Welch, seconded by Casey. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional service supplemental agreement number two with Alfred Benish and Company for the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS four, annual reporting in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns.
I move we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Embrahs Group LLC for the study and design of the Cedar Bluffs Lift Station project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey.
I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen E.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Jacob Engineering Group, Inc. For the storm drainage projects in an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the novation agreement with the United States of America for the VA lease. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the deed of reconveyance and substitution of trustee for six oh nine Vernon Avenue in an amount not to exceed six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. February report attached to packet. Are there any questions on those reports? Okay, we will file those. Item eighteen, closed session, eighteen A, litigation update. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is litigation updates. The following individuals will be included in the closed session. Mayor Rusty Height, city administrator Jim Risto, council members Rich Casey, Paul Cook, Jerry McCaw, Don Preister, Thomas Burns, Kathy Welch, and attorney Annie Matthews, and and economic development director, Mark Albert.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to go into closed session. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, the council voted to, or vote to go into, we will vote to go into closed session, so please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, we will stay in this room, so if your name wasn't listed, please leave the room.